Tracy Bonkowski?
Here.
Lucy Nolan-Dilbert?
Here.
Rob Pennell?
Present.
Craig Sims?
Here.
Chris Dilbert?
Here.
Donovan Brodza?
Here.
And Rachel Woods at his present. Okay, we'll start with our public hearing, a motion to open the public hearing. At seven oh one. Second. Roll call please. Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
Lucy Nolan-Dilbert? Yes. Tracy Bonkowski? Yes. Rob Pennell?
Present.
Yes, just say yes. Just a motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Donovan Brodza?
Yes.
And Rachel Woods at?
Yes.
Okay, so we have the zoning rezoning consideration for parcels stated below. So we will address, as we did in the past, each parcel independently. Parcel zero six three three two two six zero one eight located at five eight six eight zero Victoria Street. Would anyone like to speak on this property?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that number?
Would you like to, what property, sir, would you like to speak on?
I'm here to speak on behalf of the two ending zero one nine to zero one two.
Zero one nine and zero one two, okay. Is anyone here to speak on property ending in zero one eight?
No.
No, okay. Hi, please state your name to the record.
Hi, good evening. I'm Justin Morgan. I'm here on behalf of the parcel owners for parcels twenty six zero six three three two two six zero one nine and also parcel twenty six zero six three three two five two zero one two. We're here to appear in front of the commission to formally object to the proposed rezoning of these properties from light industrial to residential office. The three, I got the proposed changes are, number one, not consistent with the master plan. I spent all last night reading the master plan, by the way. Two, I cannot determine, nor have, has anyone here been provided with any reason that this is in the best interest of the public. And three, the property owners and operators of these parcels will be significantly prejudiced from changing it from light industrial to residential office. First, the proposed changes are not consistent with the master plan. The master plan speaks glowingly of light industrial. On page fifty-four of the master plan, the master plan states, "Land reserved for industrial purposes provides important economic benefits to the community. Not only does industrial development offer a source of jobs, it makes a strong contribution to the vote as tax base." The master plan also mentions that there's significant demand for light industrial and that the village must maintain at least a hundred and fifty acres of land designated as light industrial to keep the very favorable industrial generating tax. The master plan continues that its number one goal is to ensure the long-term viability of industrial zone property on page fifty-six of the master plan. The master plan references consistently throughout, and I have, what I'm going to ask if he put in the minutes, outlined at least a dozen different spots in the master plan that identify the desire for the village to have industrial zone properties. The change, the proposed change here does not ensure the long-term viability of industrial zone property. In fact, it does the opposite. Conversely, the master plan makes no mention, or excuse me, it makes a single mention of residential office in a paragraph, which I have included in my handout here. And it suggests that residential office zone property should be in a downtown district or nearby, and I've included a map that was the future land use of where the office district would be, and it's not remotely near this area. In addition to not being consistent with the master plan, a zoning change that is not, does not serve a legitimate public purpose is unlawful. I'm not saying there may not be any public purpose, but to date, I have not been provided one, and I made several requests. The, what we do know is, the tax base is reduced from changing it from industrial to residential office. Also, when you look at the zoning ordinance for residential office, which is New Haven ordinance fifty-one forty-one, it lists all of the things you can do with the residential office, and to name some of them, you've got general office, professional office, service office. Those same things are included in what you can already do in a light industrial zone property. Number, letter G for light industrial zone property says you can have a general, sales, service, and professional office. So, the moral is, you can have an office in an industrial zone property, but you can't have an industrial zone property in an office. So you're only taking away rights by making this change. You're not adding any utility to the property's lost tax base, lost utility. Finally, and most importantly, there's significant prejudice to the current users and owners of this property. Two of them are here tonight. The first is twenty six oh six three three zero one two. That's a property that's being operated by Dale Mirron. He runs a local business here in town that serves many of the members of the village. And his, his use of that property is conditioned under a land contract, which he entered into several years ago, that's fundamentally altered by this change. The second property is owned by the surviving spouse of George Drake. That property also has multiple commercial uses. One is, there's a cellphone tower on that that's been leased to a cellphone company for a number of years. I don't know if they provide a notice or if they know about this proceeding at all. The other is a, a machine shop that George Drake used on that property for many decades and poured his life into working on the stuff in his shop. And for the village to change this zoning code after many, many years, to take that away, seems arbitrary and capricious. The third property, I know I didn't say I was here to speak on behalf of it, but it's twenty six oh six three three twenty-two two six zero one eight. That property is a warehouse, and that property has nothing else on it besides a warehouse. If you make the zoning change, that'll become non-conformant. In fact, all three properties will become non-conformant. There's not one office in the area, and as somebody who's filled it offers for two of those properties, no one's calling to put an office in over here. These properties are located next to a railroad. Common sense says no one's putting an office there, and there's people here who can testify to that too, that no one's interested in putting an office over there. So, I ask the commission to provide us with the reason why this would be in the public's benefit, because all I can see is, there's no tax reason for the change. The utility of the land is decreased, and you're hurting several members of the community and businesses by making that change. So, I ask the commission to support the local business owners who will be affected by this and to not act in making this change. And finally, I just want to point out, if there is some other reason that the commission is thinking this change makes sense, perhaps, and I'm just theorizing because I don't know, some type of blight issue, this is something that the owners and operators, I think, would be open to discussing, if that's what the real issue is. But it doesn't seem like this zoning change is in the best interest of New Haven, the parties affected, or consistent with the master plan. And I do have some notes here that I'd like to have part of the minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief, give them to our secretary. Would anyone else like to speak on behalf of the properties? No? No, you're good? Okay. Motion to close the public hearing at seven oh one.
Oh.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, moving on to the approval of the agenda.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Public comments on agenda items? Anyone? Uh, focal of the minutes from our regular meeting dated February first, twenty twenty-two. Did everybody get a copy of that?
Yes, yes.
Is there a motion for those?
Motion to approve is presented, the February one meeting.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we have no communications correspondence. Matters for consideration, old business, zoning rezoning, item number one. Parcels, uh, zero six three three two two six zero one eight, five eight six eight zero Victoria Street. More, zero six three three two two six zero one nine, five eight six six zero Victoria Street, and parcel zero six two three two five two zero one two, five eight five eight zero Victoria Street.
I just have to answer.
You want a motion or?
Well, I was gonna make a motion, should we make the motion and then discuss it?
Check.
Due to the request, I would like to table this item until our next meeting.
And is there a second on that? Second? Discussion?
I just wanted to make two comments to the, what the gentleman brought to us, and that is, even if we do change the zoning, the property will remain as it is until it is sold or inoperable under those, that zoning for a six-month period of time. I just want to make sure everybody knows that, right? So it's not forcing anybody out or closing the business or anything like that. And number two, the, this discussion was led because we're working on a new master plan, so our zoning is matching our new master plan.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure I was understood.
Correct. Thank you. Any other questions on it?
I don't have a question, but my, my comment is gonna be that we, we, we keep tabling this. And I, I think we're at a point where we should just deal with it, or let's just take it off the, take it off the table. I mean, because it's, it's been on the table now for three, four months.
Well, no, because this one's been on for eight months, because it's a different, but yes.
But I mean, we're, we're talking about rezonings, we've been dealing with rezonings, we've sent a number of items to council already.
Correct.
And these three keep being tabled. And so I guess what I'm saying is, you know, let's either deal with it or, or, you know, let's just take it off the agenda, period. I mean, because, I mean, what's gonna, what's gonna happen next month? I mean, you know, we've had two public hearings, and, and so we've heard the concerns, and if you feel that concerns are valid, then let's just not do the rezoning. I mean, because, I mean, because what we're in effect asking these people to come back next month to find out what we're gonna do. I mean, that's just my opinion. I mean, I, I would rather deal with it or just take it off the agenda.
I guess for me, the reason I, I motion tabling is that they came concerned at the last.
Voice down.
Well, but I mean, taking more requests, I guess Thursday, and if Sean and the attorney, if there's something they can talk to them about and see if there's accommodations or, I mean, personally, for the long range of the village, I, I, you know, that's what we're doing this for. We're not doing it for, you know, yesterday or today. We're doing it as what we hope to create here with our new master plan. And, um, so I mean, I, I'm very positive for it, but I'm also, uh, I would like to just rush and do it, but I also want to, want to give people the opportunity to speak on it and discuss it, and, you know, maybe there's ideas or, I mean, they're hard one way, we're hard the other way, maybe there's something in between or that works it out. That, that was, I don't want to see it keep going on either. My position is to approve it, but my, I'm trying to, you know, there's a family here and there's their property that they've just inherited, and I wouldn't mind if everybody was on, on deck together with it.
Has there been any other conversation with Sean and John as far as any potential?
Okay, so for, I'm sorry, Mr.?
Morgan.
Morgan.
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you.
I have a two spot.
Okay, there were a couple contacts that you made with the village.
Yes.
Just in the last few days. I know you've had multiple other contacts, but in the last few days, which, and obviously he brought up some points tonight, you've been requesting information and such over the last couple days. I personally just became aware of it yesterday and such. And so I think that we owe it to both parties to review his concerns from a, a professional means as opposed to, you know, us who really don't have that. And our attorney would like to speak to you at some time. I was working beforehand to try to give you that contact information.
That'd be great.
So that they could have a conversation. So that is, is where, you know, we're at, that this, this communication and efforts to communicate, I know Mr. Morgan came into the office on Friday, correct?
Yes, sir.
And had sent an email out also on Friday, or?
I, I think I sent an email on Thursday, and then I came in the office on Friday.
Okay, and so it was received on Friday. So, in, in sense, in speaking to our representation, it would, they'd like an opportunity to speak to him about his concerns.
Then I'm good with that, I mean, because there, there seemed to be some, some ongoing dialogue, so, yeah. And this is information I didn't know.
Right, it was, I did send out an email today, late. To be fair, it was late. You didn't read it by either day. Yes, so.
I was in airplane mode.
Yes, you were probably still in airplane mode, so I tried to sort of give everybody a heads up. So, sorry, that did not go to you. So, um, any other questions on the, on that? So we have a motion on the table. Robert, is your motion to table all three?
Yes, table all three, because I just took it as being one. I guess I said one, one A, one B, one C.
Okay. Okay, and the second was from Lucy? Yes. Yep. Okay, so, um, we'll do a roll call on motion, just because. Rob Pennell?
Yes.
Lucy Nolan-Dilbert?
Yes.
Tracy Bonkowski?
Yes.
Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Rachel Woods at is a yes, and Donovan Brodza?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Morgan, do you have a business cards with you?
If you ask me that, I don't, but, well, let me check my bag, I might.
Okay, was, even if you just?
I'll give you mine, it'll be good.
Okay. Okay, the next on the agenda is the master plan presentation, adoption, discussion, and action. So last month, we had a workshop and an opportunity for like final feedback on the master plan. Thank you. Did anybody want to have any more discussion on the master plan this evening?
Um, I, I would like to table that. Again, I hate to use the word tabling, if we want to get things done. But from, from me, this last month has been no time of my life, it's only bowling and wrestling and my son, and it's almost like every single night. So these, these regionals were over this past weekend, hallelujah. So I have not read it cover to cover, and there's concerns that I, I, I have, I would appreciate we could put it off till next month, and, um, because I, I, I don't know if you guys had time to read it since you've been back from vacation, but I didn't have time from Thursday till today to, to cover to cover it, and I can't, I can't vote on something that I haven't, you know, that's this important and this big to, unless I've, I've done all my, my homework, and I apologize that it's not completed, but, um, I don't know, maybe you guys are in the same boat as me. But I have a life again, so I'm pretty excited to, I, I can promise you within the next two weeks that I have all my notes back to you on it.
Anybody else? No? Okay.
No, I'm willing to table it till, till around the opportunity he needs to, to review it more thoroughly.
That's not a shame, that's wrong.
Do I put a motion up?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to table the master plan presentation, adoption, discussion, and action. Item number two, old business to our, uh, April.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I, you know, so you're not gonna be at April's meeting, remember that?
Yeah, I went down.
What is it?
Okay.
So you'll be, you will be here?
No, no, uh, well, I'm not be at April's meeting. I mean, don't change, make a change of plans.
Well, it's spring break for the kids.
Yeah. I was supposed to be going to Florida.
We don't want you.
Rob's going up.
Oh, you're going? Oh, okay, so you will be here.
Okay, so.
I hope it's my first trip to Florida, I'm still in there.
So, carry on.
Were there, sorry, were there any objections on how you raised?
I have read it cover to cover, and I brought my concerns to the, the meeting that we had, and I came prepared tonight, so I'm an A.
All right.
I think we've put it off long enough, entire tabling thing. I agree with Chris.
I don't agree. Anybody else?
I don't, I just wish that I.
Okay. Okay, moving on, it'll be on next month's agenda.
That's what, the fourth?
Will we vote? What? Oh, that motion's settled for the day. Did Rachel Wood's the objection? Okay, capital improvement plan committee appointment, discussion, and action. First, I will, did everybody get the email about the capital improvement plan committee that I sent out a week or so ago? Is anybody interested in the capital improvement? We'll start with that, volunteers?
I'm a volunteer.
Chris, Rob, Ari?
I defer to Chris though, if he would, wants to do that.
Do you like to arm wrestle? No? So, okay, uh, motion for, do you guys want to just decide you're good with Chris?
No, we should probably make a motion to.
Yeah.
I mean, shouldn't we make a motion to? It's our responsibility to inform the committee, isn't it? So shouldn't we make a motion to form it?
I think we're just looking for the appointment of a person at this point in time.
Good, I think, let me just say that the committee's gonna be made up of someone from planning council.
Yeah.
Park and West, um.
Yeah, you know what, Tracy made me know the answer to this, is it going to be, is the oversight gonna come from council?
It's on the next council meeting, agenda to discuss.
So we really don't know where the oversight is coming from, whether it comes from here or there, but we, we have been asked for an appointment of a representative for the committee.
I think, you know what, the oversight is gonna go through council. I can answer this.
It has to.
I was gonna say, I would think.
I think just the, the paperwork has to process through planning.
Okay.
That's why I thought we had to create it. I guess it's all interpretation of reading that stuff.
Correct.
It's like reading. We did read that.
I believe what, like, Mrs. Bonkowski was saying was that the council would kind of be overseers and managers of the commission, of the committees being put together, and that planning commission would make a recommendation for the adoption once the plan's completed. So it just follows the whole process of that.
Gotcha.
Yeah, the email from President Pryor says we will be creating a plan, a program that will allow the village to create a schedule, so, to me, that reads council.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Chris Dilbert as the representative from the planning commission on the capital improvement plan.
Second? Second from Tracy or Lucy?
Rachel.
Or Tracy?
Lucy.
Lucy.
I, I did the second.
I'll take it again.
Oh, all in favor? Any opposed? While she carries, for Chris to be the capital improvement rep for the planning committee. New business, we have none. Planners report?
Uh, I made the updates requested from the feedback we got for the workshop that we did.
Okay.
Of the master plan. So I worked with Somet, and he kind of put together some of the DPW stuff, sort of the water system and the sewer systems and everything else. So he updated the language, so it represents what the current state of affairs is for the infrastructure. So we've done that. I updated the goals, objectives to reflect some of the senior elder care facilities and agents, the housing mix, as well as the Grashit corridor improvement, uh, the Grashit improvement corridor district. Yeah. So I added that into the, into the goals, objectives as well. So those were done, and then I double-checked all of the, the source material for the demographics and their accurate, and the latest of what, they're accurate in terms of what's provided through these different portals and everything else, whether or not they actually reflect the true reality. That's something that you can always like kind of debate, what the projections are and what their assumptions are for projections, but it's like, it's the latest data that's available right now from some kind of census. So, and that's something too where it wants, like, the full twenty-twenty census data gets thrown out there, so you can always update that stuff. It, it doesn't take much, it's just a simple amendment, and then you can just update just that section of the master plan. The same thing with the sixty-day review period, once we enter into that period. I, this can be made throughout the entire sixty-day review period, because we're open to feedback from, we already saw, we're open to feedback from the jurisdictions, because we're submitted, submitted to all the partnering, or the neighboring jurisdictions, as well as the county, utility companies, school district, all get a copy. So whatever feedback they have or concerns, which we've, we've done that for the Shelby Towns of Master Plan, it just came to the calendar itself, and that need to be updated, it's up to them to update that. So it's, it's still possible, it's just a state period, so nothing's like permanent until it's formally adopted, and even that's not permanent, so you can always modify it. Yep.
All right.
I would like to comment that, um, just, just even for the people at home or in the audience, these little boxes we're in, sometimes it's kind of hard to hear the voice unless it literally, you hear it from the ceiling, because, oh, sorry. it literally, you hear it from the ceiling, because, oh, sorry.
I was going to say the same thing. It kind of diffuses us.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I apologize if I've not heard things right, and I know you're not, so, um, it's, it feels weird in here.
Okay, so that's it, John, you're good?
That's all.
Okay, any public comments on non-agenda items? Uh, call from the table. I do have something. I spoke to President Prymore yesterday, and she would like to address the sign ordinance, again, in a sense of square footage of properties. So for an example, you have large industrial building, it was not discussed to the point of square footage or acreage, like what would be this bottom line, some metric, that if you are so big with so much space, you get more signage, um, as opposed to just the signs that we already have. Um, is that, am I clear?
Is this, is this equating from the tractor supply?
Correct.
So again, if I, I can get a, I'll use, um, where coyotes used to sit. So really, one tenant could go in that entire building.
Sorry.
Am I correct? One tenant could go in that whole building that he's building right now?
You're.
Correct? So then for every door, I get to put in another sign, or my square footage is larger than it would have been if I was just a small tenant, so I get several signs.
I'm sorry, I thought it was just the, it's not equal to doors.
Well, that was, they wanted to use, they were, they wanted us to change it equal to doors, which I objected because.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there was some conversation about doors.
Right, so now this, this can is going by square footage, but again.
So that, yes, so that a larger building would have.
More signs?
You know, yeah, I had, you know, I did have a conversation with John, like there was different aspects, like a larger building, maybe two entrances gets two entrance signs as opposed to one entrance sign, or, um, what were some of the other?
There's, there's different prescriptions. Like typically, is, there's what we have currently, which is just if you have a structure or a building, you can have one sign, and you're governed by this many square feet of sign, and then you get like a binding sign or whatever, I don't know, sign, whatever the second sign is for the street within the right of way, or outside the right of way. Um, then there's other prescriptions that where you're going to have, um, different calculations, where we do it where, um, you have the facade square footage. So they'll like calculate, let's say if the building face is 10 feet tall by 100 feet long, that's 1,000 square feet, and then based on that, then you look at some type of like calculation, and then tells you how large your size allowed to be within that, and obviously go maximum. Um, there's other ones where if you have like multiple entrances, let's say like, uh, like, for example, like Meyer or Kroger, we have like dual entrances. If you have two main entrances, which kind of is contrary to your statement, but if you had two entrances, maybe one's more main than the other, um, then you're allowed to have two larger signs.
Well, like decorum has two entrances in the entrance.
Yeah, which a lot of times the, um, what happens is subdivisions are governed a little bit differently, because you're having like usually different street accesses, and they're meant to identify the subdivision and the entrance point. But, um, that's typically how I'll look at it with, there's different ways of looking at it for buildings and structures and commercial things. Um, the issue there is just like, whenever you start doing these types of things, it becomes more and more complicated to apply. Um, and if the village is trying to do it by themselves, or whatever it is, like you're going to have to find somebody who's going to come in here, learn how to do the calculation, apply the, the ordinance, and then also like govern and, and, uh, enforce it, um, which makes it, there's just more of a learning curve when you start adding those types of elements, like those performance and progressive scales and stuff like that. Um, and then the other thing too is just like, at what point is enough signage, enough signage? It's just like, does everybody need like to be able to project its own space? Like, do you need to just be able, be miserable enough to crash it or whatever? Like what, how much signage do you need? And does your sign, can you do different things within your lives, square footage is creative, that identifies what you have in the building? Um, that's up to the person, the tenants at that point, to figure out what that is. Um, it doesn't necessarily mean the village needs to act we ask and, and give people 500 square feet of signage space just because they can't figure out how to work within the regulations. I mean, we don't do that really with any other regulation, but that's not worse. So, um, yeah, that's just kind of my two cents on science, so.
So what was the request for the conversation?
Just to have a conversation as to how we feel about signs being, um, having a different metric, paraphrasing, for a larger building like, say, Tractor Supply versus a smaller building like.
Dollar General.
Dollar General.
Or a multi-tenant building.
Or a multi-tenant building. Like, do we want, like, do we want to limit this store to this sign and this store to this sign, or would we like to expand on this, on this business?
So for instance, the, the structure going up on Gresham 26 is supposed to have four units.
Correct.
So those four units may be entitled to, uh, 20 square feet, okay? But the, the pylon sign identifying the whole plaza.
Monument.
Could be something much larger than that because it's identifying the whole plaza.
I, I mean, honestly, I think it's a complicated metric. Myself, I think there's for every approach, there, there's a different, I think it's very complicated. I, I think it's not very cut in by, and it does open up to that, that exact interpretation where, you know, yeah, sure, we have this, but yeah, ultimately, because of the way we define it, we could end up with this. John?
Yeah, and I know the other thing that I just saw as well, which is kind of the issue and part of the reason why we looked at doing the ordinance, the sign ordinance, as well as every other community within, part of the country, um, is just the idea of regulating speech, which is constitutionally protected, right? So when we go down the avenue of like, well, you're allowed to have a second sign, you have a second tenant within your structure, and that, or with, let's say, let's say for Tractor Supply example, right, now say, or like a Target, or they have, say, a CVS within their structure. If you specifically call out like, well, you're allowed to, then tell everybody, you have this second business with that sign, and that's all you can do with that second sign, it's allowed to be this size. Like now you probably start wading into the waters of like, you're telling people what they can put within that sign and going in that speech direction. Um, and that's where it starts getting more complicated in terms of how do you, how then do you make the multiple sign situation work? Like, how do you identify, what language do you use to make the regulation work where it doesn't violate the constitution and everything else? So it just, it's something that's doable.
I think it's even complicated on like the depth of a business versus the width of a business. I mean, you could have a business that's that deep with a sign this big, if their front edge is narrow or, I mean, I, I think it is very complicated. I, I mean, I, I see the, the point to some degree, but I, I do think it's very complicated.
I mean, for me, I, when Tracy said it, I'm always willing to hear more input, and I mean, that's what I think we're here for. Um, the word door is scared the hell out of me though, because I mean, you could put a heck of a lot of doors in a building and you get a sign door.
Well, that, that structure right there has at least four doors, because I think we, we encouraged the side and back entrance or whatever.
Right, and you.
Yeah, well, there's one on the back too, and they're going to get it out of the dumpsters, so that means that they can put a sign on those two.
I just think of all the conversations that we had of signs that we didn't want to see.
Yeah.
Right? That was, that drum was beat a lot here at this table, and that's where that will go.
Because the more signs, it's basically adding bullet points of what they provide, which is where, I mean, you can have a longer list of things that, that fall under that. Um, and that, I think, is what we are trying to avoid with it. I can say that I was in a community for bowling regionals this weekend, and I was actually looked up their sign ordinance while we were in a restaurant, because I'd never seen anything like this, and I just.
We need to get Ralph a light.
Good light.
Yeah, and my wife's like, why do I need to pay attention to these things? But it looked horrendous, a beautiful little town, but my God, it was a disaster of signage sticking ears to get out over and pylon, it was, it was awful. It made that little town just look like.
I think the practicality too is like, how many businesses could we possibly be talking about here in a meeting? Like, even with potential property sales, I mean, we, you know, I'm not saying never, you know, never say ever, but, I mean, how many parcels do we really have sitting out there that would, someone would acquire, put this very large business on and?
I think before we discuss it openly again, I think we should actually enforce the one we got.
I was, I was going to try and comment around, I mean.
Yeah, and the one we currently have isn't being enforced at all.
That's right.
And I know Tracy and I have asked quite a few times about the enforcement of it, and I will say, um, you know, I reach out to Dave Callan quite frequently, just this week, and with that reach, I mean, as, because it's not our job, we currently don't have a court enforcement officer, but he has been very, he did resolve a problem, you know, to see a sign, give him a call, he has personally goes out, does it, takes care of it. So.
But was everyone notified?
Of what?
Well, but we, we, we stated publicly that the judge was to notify everyone that was not in compliance.
Oh.
He gave them three years, I believe.
No, five years.
Five years, well, I thought, thank you, five years.
No.
And five years was coming on.
No.
No, we're up to like three years.
It has.
I was told that yesterday. No, Tracy, I was told yesterday, no, they have not notified you.
So, but the blanket letter was sent down.
So what's that? It was adopted in 19.
19, okay, well, it seems like that. Still free.
I kind of like to see how this one works, and then if it's not working, then I'd readdress it myself. I mean, I'm always good to hear more, but we haven't actually gotten the fruits of our work, um, we put a lot of work in.
And we did.
I think it might be prudent to just see if we do get any more requests for variances for the same, for the same issue.
Yeah.
Because that may like signify if we do have a problem with orders. Um, but at the same time, if we haven't encountered an issue yet, and I don't think it's a good deal with anybody, um, and I think there's, I don't think we really achieved any significant justice by, by changing it, I mean, people are able to still operate the business, still have signage, still have plenty of visibility and stuff, like, we're not letting them. So I think, um, we'll see if we do receive other variants, then maybe we can reconsider it, or submit petitions to the village to relook at it, and then we'll look at that. Um, that would be my, my advice on that, so.
Okay, anybody else?
So it's been three years, and we just now got our first question regarding it.
Um, it was, if you want, you want to fill in on the Tractor Supply, Tracy, or?
Did there something else to?
Because Tractor Supply built a garden center, so they created another door on the front, and they wanted to put a garden center sign there. Fair enough, that sounds right.
On the wall.
Um, yeah, a wall sign, but our ordinance doesn't allow it. So they went to ZBA, which is now council, and they denied it. And I clearly stated at the table.
They allowed it.
That, I mean, they allowed it. I apologize. Talk to you afterwards. I clearly stated at the table, you brought a group of people together to work on an ordinance, and we all did our job, and now you're going against what we set the motion. Well, they didn't care. So I came back to, just being honest. So I said I'd come back to planning and ask you guys what you think. Do we want to revisit it? And last month, everyone agreed, no, we don't want to revisit it, myself included. He was here. So that's where this is coming from.
So they were, they asked me for a variance?
They were asking for a variance to put up a second sign.
Okay, so isn't that what the ZBA is for?
It is. I, I will agree with you, but I also feel very strongly that now you've opened.
So we left that business, so we have to leave the next business to us.
Right, so when I come, President, thank you. So we're, that's, I don't know. I just, I, you know, I like rules and.
Yeah, they went against all of the recommendations.
And variances shouldn't be automatic. They should be few and far between. Correct.
Yeah.
And I'll be honest with you.
And was, did anybody mention, hey, you have like a year to get your sign made to an monument sign?
Say again?
Did anybody mention that you have to change your pylon sign to a monument sign within the next two years?
Well, no, because nobody, I won't do that. And I know everyone's sick of hearing me speak about it, including Genevieve, because I bring it up all the time.
I don't, listen, I don't care, and this is nothing we can do. You, this, I don't mean this to you.
I don't say anything though.
You have, you have, you're the council. I mean.
But I'm one person.
Right, so I, I mean, it's here, it was here, we gave it, they took it, and now it's, you know.
Approved it.
And approved it, and, you know, it's not really, I understand it, but I agree with you. It's frustrating for me too, to work on something for a long time and put a lot of time and energy into it, and some of it has been just problems with staffing. I, I do get that, you know, we've been in and out with code enforcement, not having it, having it, and you having too much on his plate, and, you know, with other things. I, but it, it's, there's nothing we here, I mean, we could make that a formal record of, hey, could you please follow through with it? But we already did that by sending it to them and saying that it exists. So.
I don't think we really had to do it again since it was.
Three years, like a refresh, or?
Yeah. Just keep following through, I mean, we're never going to get anywhere in this.
I'll put it on the next agenda. I mean, I, when I have a problem putting it on the agenda, we'll put another formal.
Well, I'm going to put it on my notes for the next council meeting.
And Tracy has been asking for an inventory for the last year, two years?
Yeah, they asked for inventory, yeah.
I mean, I drive down Gresham, and I count like 15 to 18 that are out of compliance, and that's not including the couple businesses that have them on the roof, that's not including the panel truck or whatever is parked in the lot.
That's the one that Finn was.
So, I mean, there's tons of them out there.
Or the painted signs that have gone up.
Well, I think.
Since the ordinance came into place, all sorts of stuff.
I think another problem is something that have gone up and existed since we've done the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yes, I have.
It's been a problem without the ordinance.
With that, yeah, and we didn't do anything even about them, so that by week, yes.
The village.
To me, I know we're not the enforcement, but is that where we're led into is individuals? Does it be out of any formal complaint?
I may follow up.
Do you?
Yeah, that's what I was saying earlier, I reach out to Abe, or I used to reach out to Dan. If I see it, I, you know.
I mean, I guess I did more when I knew Dan was here, because I'd, I'd see Dan, and I'd talk to Dan, and Dan would, you know, obviously send emails and whatever, you know. He was more interactive on input.
Dave is really good about following through and getting things done and give you a call and whatever, so.
Maybe that's what we got to do is, you know, put our list together, give their note, because obviously Craig's noticed things, and, I mean, we all noticed things, and maybe just put it in a group, not as a board, but as a.
Okay.
Hit them all the same thing.
Do you guys want that on the agenda next month?
Can we open the sign ordinance?
No.
Or to talk about it?
I mean, I can just put it on there, and we can talk about it, or if you want another formal recommendation, council. I mean, I think Tracy's going to share with, I think they know, I think.
Maybe there should be something formal for last month. I'm sure Tracy's making a note.
I don't know. I don't think council as a whole is aware that nothing's been done with it. I think some people are aware. Okay, make another formal.
And I also think that it's not on the plate, so it doesn't, you know what I mean, it's not something they participated in and.
Well, how many times, I, I mean, I know, I don't know how many times you've brought it up here, but how many times have you brought it up to council?
Probably just as many.
I don't know that it's been brought up to council as much as it's been brought up to Mrs. Prymore.
Yeah. Well, maybe we, you know, let me know if.
That's why I said I don't think council as a whole.
I'm going to bring it up, actually. And, you know, bring it up as a concern from our table. We don't really need a motion for that, you know, on our agenda. Hey, because you guys should be, you have new. Okay, because you guys should be, you have new, what do you call it, consulting, or like code enforcement, that's not regen, two, isn't it?
A person?
Three persons have applied.
Hire all of them?
Right?
I mean, really, I, I, that's not a joke, I mean.
Yeah, is there, is there only one, only one opening? Is there, is there any room for a second person? Because even though we're small, that's a lot of work for one person to do, especially if they have a full time job already.
Yeah. Dan's a bulldog and, I mean, he couldn't take care of all the things out there, I mean, it's just Dan, I mean.
I mean, because you go with signs to, you know, the spring coming up, you're gonna have weeds, you're gonna have, I mean, even in the wintertime, you got, uh, people that don't shovel the sidewalks, it's, you know, emergency bargains is another thing, it's not ever enforced.
When they shovel, there's no one to the streets.
Yeah.
Which is illegal.
So, okay.
I would love to see them hire all three if I had, at my dream, and then at least for six months and pound some things out around here that just haven't gotten done.
Okay. Tracy, good?
I'm good.
Anybody else called on the table? Motion to adjourn?
Prove.
Uh, seven, one, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, thank you, everyone.